Good evening, Happy New Year. Welcome to the first meeting of our year. We canceled our earlier January meeting, but for the City Council of Clayton. And it's 7:00 PM. And we're going to begin moving through the agenda. I do want to give you a heads up. I'm going to rearrange the agenda item for the recognition of the students so that you can choose then to sit through the entire meeting if you wish, but we're going to try and be accommodating to you and move that along quickly. Can we please have the clerk call the roll?
Thank you. Mayor Diaz?
Did you ask for me first?
Yes.
Usually the mayor goes last.
With both, okay. So for a roll call, you go last, okay. So then I'll start with Councilmember Clovin.
I'm here.
Tillman.
Here.
Juan.
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Trupiano.
Here.
Thank you. Mayor Diaz?
Yes, thank you very much for that accommodation. By the way, I want to introduce our new city clerk. She, tell me when you started and tell us a little bit about yourself, because I know you had some experience in other municipalities or counties as well.
Yes, certainly. Thank you, Mayor Diaz. My name is Stephanie Cabrera-Brown. I joined the city of Clayton on January 2nd. I have over 10 years of experience clerking. I've clerked for Alameda County, Ava Energy, which is formerly known as East Bay Community Energy, the county of Santa Cruz, sorry, and the city and county of San Francisco.
Excellent. Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll do the pledge of allegiance and get into the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, as I said, we're going to move the agenda around and bring up the recognition of the students. And Councilmember Clovin will do the honors on that.
It's awesome when we do these recognitions for Do the Right Thing program. And we see all these faces in our audience. The Do the Right Thing program has been around since 2010 when the City Council and the schools and CBCA all said, "Let's put together a program that honors certain character traits which we find important in our community: integrity, kindness, respect, self-discipline, inclusion." These are all like amazing traits. And for tonight, we have the opportunity to award some certificates for the traits of kindness, one of the awesome traits which we get to recognize tonight. And we're going to start off with the elementary school, Mount Diablo Elementary School. And I understand that the principal, Sarah Harris, is out tonight, but we have Vice Principal Melanie Buck. Come on, Emily.
Now, you may not be able to hear yourself, but when you speak into the mic, everybody out there can.
Okay, thank you. Hi there, I am Melanie Buck. I'm the proud Vice Principal of Mount Diablo Elementary. And on behalf of our principal, Ms. Harris, and all of us at Mount Diablo Elementary, we are just thrilled and proud and humbled to congratulate some of our students. So first, I would like to call up Maddie Ma from Michelle's class. Maddie, come on up. Okay, so a few things about how kind Maddie is. Maddie, you're very kind, aren't you? Yes, okay. Maddie has been a pleasure to get to know this year, and she's a lovely student to teach, says Ms. Shelley, her kindergarten teacher. Maddie stands out when it comes to kindness. She is not only kind to her peers, but her respect towards adults in the classroom and around campus are always demonstrated of her kindness. She has been seen helping students who may need a positive influence by making good choices, listening and following directions, obeying the rules, and works hard to be the best citizen she can be. She is kind when she shares supplies at her table and toys within the classroom, uses polite words such as "please" and "thank you," and lends a hand to those in need of support. Maddie is a kind student, and for that, we are grateful to have her at Mount Diablo Elementary. So congratulations, Maddie. Okay, next up is Lorelei Light from Ms. Cross's class. Come on up. Okay, Lorelei, per her teacher, Ms. Cross, is willing to share with others. She is bubbly and can have a conversation with anyone. She's always polite, saying "thank you" whenever she asks for help. Her kindness reflects what her family has taught her. Her mom helps in the classroom and sees Lorelei following that model that her mother uses in the classroom with other students. You have made good friends in the classroom due to your kindness with others. Congratulations. Next up for the kindness award for the Do the Right Thing initiative is Charlotte Lovadu. Charlotte, there she is. When they get almost as tall as you, you know that they're growing. Charlotte truly demonstrates the spirit of kindness. She goes out of her way to be helpful and uplifting, showing great leadership qualities. She demonstrated great patience and understanding as she assisted a student next to her with remaining engaged and in keeping with, up with her assignments. Her can-do attitude helps all around her feel special. Side note, I did look in her file today and saw that her kindergarten teacher said that you were super kind and that you should probably join like Girl Scouts or some leadership thing because you are always being a leader. So congratulations. Melanie Lynch? Did Melanie? There you are, yes! Also has the best first name ever. Melanie is a fifth grader in Ms. Keough's class. Melanie is an absolute delight to have in class. She is thoughtful and kind, one of those people that can automatically make others feel better by doing just the same. Through her words and actions with friends, classmates, and during academic activities and discussions, she consistently demonstrates a concern for others and how they are feeling. Her kindness and concern is not only for individuals she knows, but stretches to the school, her community, and beyond. Melanie exemplifies many of the Do the Right Thing characteristics which make her such a wonderful student and friend, but it is her warmth, kindness, and smile that will make a lasting impression on her teacher, Ms. Keough. Good job. There we go. Turn, hold. Thank you so much.
And next is time for our middle school.
I am Vicki Wilson, the principal at Diablo View Middle. And I will say kindness is a trait that it was so hard to choose because we have so many kind children at Diablo View Middle. We had three that we're going to recognize tonight, but I definitely want to say that this is a trait that we see a lot on our campus. So with that being said, the first is going to be Paige Ridenhour. Paige was nominated by Ms. Crouppa, our science teacher, and she says, "When the character trait of kindness was mentioned, I didn't even have to think about who to pick. I immediately knew this award was going to Paige Ridenhour. She is considerate, she is compassionate, she is empathetic, and she is understanding. She's patient, and she is always polite. She possesses all the characteristics of being kind. There's no student more deserving of this award. Paige exemplifies kindness in everything she does, from the way she treats herself to others and to her teachers. When we had a new student come to our school, before she even met the student, she emailed her to invite her to sit with her and her friends at lunchtime. She cares about others' feelings and is one of the most genuine people that I have ever met. Paige, thank you for being kind to everyone around you. You make the world a brighter place, Mrs. Crouppa." That's all good.
Do you need to take another photograph? Oh, I got it, I got it.
You got it, okay. Next up is Evan Weber. Evan was nominated by Mrs. Ruff, one of our PE teachers, and she says, "I chose Evan because he is kind to other students in my class, he is always on task, and helpful whenever I need him. He also has included many of my new students in group activities or team play and worked with them on specific orders in order for them to be successful." So, thank you. Something like that. Something like that. And finally, but absolutely not least, Jamie Ty. Jamie was recognized by Ms. Pelosi, her math teacher. And Ms. Pelosi says, "I nominated Jamie because she's always has a friendly smile and she is welcoming of all students. She exemplifies kindness."
Thank you. You bet.
Thank you both, principal and vice principal. We appreciate your work in selecting and teachers for selecting these students. And next time, we're going to try to see if we can get our high school involved as well. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you all. And thank you to Councilmember Clovin for shepherding this activity for us. We'll now move into public comment for non-agendated items. And please limit your messages to three minutes, and there'll be a timer. So, do we have anybody online? Nope, we got a, we got a...
You got a paper. Can we go down?
Right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, for this opportunity to speak. Just a request and a comment. When I was in your job decades ago, it seems like it's been forever, we had a timer that sat right in front of me. So when I'm talking, when people were talking to the council, we could look at the council. Now the timer's up here, and you can't really keep track of your time. And it's difficult for somebody like me that was on that side where I could talk as long as I wanted and not worry about, about the time. And I don't really want to talk at that screen up there. I want to talk to you people up here to make sure we get our, our comments addressed. The other thing is Gary and I formed Clayton Watch a year ago. And the reason we did that is because we wanted a mechanism to get information out to the community about what the City Council was doing, the elections, and any pertinent issues in the city. And because it was not an organized group, we were limited on the amount of money we could spend and the information we could put out, obviously because of the money. And so I just want to announce that we're going to form, we're going to organize or form a political action committee for Clayton Watch probably by the end of February so we can be more active in the community. We won't be limited by the amount of money we can spend and the information we put out, especially for the election next year, anything else that's going on in the city right now. And you've seen a lot of the information we put out, but it's all been financed by us. And we want other people to participate in that. So with that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your service when as mayor and council member. Any other cards for public comment of non-agendated items?
I currently do not have any other cards, and there are no members on Zoom raising their hand.
Anything online?
No.
Neither, okay. No one else is going to speak, I'm going to close the public comment for non-agendated items. Thank you very much. And now we will move into item four, which is the consent calendar. And there are a number of items there, and does anyone have a desire to pull one of the items? Thank you all for coming out, by the way.
I think we should wait until they, they came. Just give them a second.
They give them a minute?
Anybody?
No, we want to give them a minute to...
Yeah, yeah, okay. Have you got anybody you need to pay tribute to at the end of the meeting?
Luckily, no one else has passed, no.
Again, thank you very much. Okay, we will now go back into the item four for the consent calendar. Does anybody wish to pull any of the items? Nobody, okay. Any public comment on the consent calendar?
I currently do not have any speaker cards, and I'm not seeing any hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you so much. All right.
I'd move approval.
Move approval by Juan.
A second.
Second by Trupiano. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Thank you. Councilmember Clovin.
Aye.
Clovin, aye. Tillman?
Aye.
Tillman, aye. Juan?
Aye.
Juan, aye. Vice Mayor Trupiano?
Aye.
Trupiano, aye. Mayor Diaz?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, we have five ayes.
Okay, that completes item number four. We've done item number five by moving it forward. And I'm going to ask now the city manager for any report that he may have.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, nothing too much. Just wanted to make sure the public is aware of that and continues to go to the city's website if you have a question that you would like anyone in City Hall to answer. We use a platform called REPT, but it's on our homepage. It says Ask the City. If you click that button, we're happy to ask. We have gotten just a tremendous amount of public participation, which has been wonderful. We have over 4,000 video views and just appreciate the public's interest in what's going on with the city. So please continue to bring that to us, the public. Additionally, the community survey results are now completed. I just clicked the button before I walked over on my newsletter, which provides that to all of the community. Council has also received that today, this morning. Additionally, if you don't get my newsletter, please feel free to send me your email. Happy to sign you up. But also, it will be on the city's webpage under the city manager's page, and you'll be able to look at those community survey results. Additionally, we will be bringing them back for public review for council and any public comment on the February 6th council meeting as a continuation of the strategic planning process with this city council. Again, just want to thank the public. We got well over 500 participants in the survey. I want to say it was 576 if I, if I'm remembering correctly, and that is kind of a tremendous output for our first go-around in a long time on a survey of this nature. So just again, thank the public for your participation, and yeah, appreciate all the input we've been getting. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Okay. There are no public hearings, so I'm going to move into action item eight. And I'm going to switch the order as we have a number of people out in the audience are here to speak on item eight B. And so we will do that first before we go into the item eight A. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you again, Mayor. This item before you today was requested initially by then-Vice Mayor Diaz to bring back to City Council for discussion. And so that is what we're doing tonight. What we're looking for, for council after my brief presentation, is just any direction related to the item moving forward. There's not going to be a specific action this evening. What was outlined in the staff report was the discussion of potential parking programs related to the development that is going on at what's known as the Olivia Project, which is an 81-unit development, multifamily development, one-bedroom, two-bedroom apartments. Just to give everyone a little bit of factual information related to the parking, when that development was approved, it was approved with 106 parking spots. That is, it meets the legal requirement for the number of parking spots required for that amount of units. Staff did, upon council's request, kind of evaluate some possibilities and possible issues related to the parking with that development. The summary is, at this point in time, because the development is two to three years away from construction being completed, and what could be potentially another six months to a year after that before it really is, gets close to full occupancy, we believe at this time, we essentially are trying to solve for a problem that we don't yet have. At right now, we, you know, have a development that's being built. It has its legal requirements for parking spots of 106. Doing any additional parking programs right now, staff feels, is just putting the cart before the horse. We believe that we would have ample time as the development is closer to construction completion to look at a more comprehensive parking study of the entire city and what impact that and anything else that may be going on at the time the city may have for city parking overall, which includes the downtown and other areas of the city. Some people may say that you already have a parking program going on in an area of the city called Regency. That is true, but that is very different from the issue related to the Olivia Project. We moved forward with the Regency parking program because we had significant public safety issues that we discussed in a public forum and addressed loitering, litter, other negative activities happening in that neighborhood that was really creating a significant nuisance for the public and our police force. And so a parking program was a way to really allow for that behavior to not, you know, it still goes on from time to time, but lessen it significantly. What we have in front of us today is, we don't know if we have an issue. And it's something that definitely we can evaluate as we get closer, but doing it right now would be akin to, you know, trying to identify the number of cars going down a road that we have yet to build. Staff, in the staff report evaluated, you know, if we were to move forward with a parking program specifically in the area of Stranahan, which has been an area that's been mentioned, the police chief evaluated that he would really need additional community service officer-level staff to start to really enforce a parking program there and in other areas of the city. I think the difficulty with what we put forward is, anytime we add staff, it's definitely inefficient when you're doing it at a size and scale of what the Stranahan parking program might be. Thus, there's a really high cost right now because we can't add portions of FTEs, that's just not realistic in a hiring perspective. And so to enforce something like that seven days a week in the appropriate manner, we really are having full-time staff, probably above and beyond the amount of hours, but there really is no other way to hire for it. Thus, another reason why we're requesting that we do nothing at this time, wait till the development is constructed and people start to occupy the development, and then come back in because we might be able to have much more economy of scale if we have a bigger citywide parking enforcement program that we would look at. Additionally, we're concerned if we were to do a parking program that, say, just was more of passive enforcement. So essentially, we restrict parking in the Stranahan neighborhood through a parking program, but we only enforce it when we get calls and police aren't dealing with other issues. The issue with that is that, again, right now, we are trying to solve a problem we don't have. And if we were to then initiate a parking program, we could see other areas of the city kind of following suit, and we could end up with significant pockets of parking programs in areas where individuals may not want people to park for 15 or 20 minutes while they're dropping off or picking up school or potentially going to a park. And, you know, these are public streets. These are not ingated HOAs where the streets are maintained by the specific residents in the area. They are publicly maintained, taxpayer-funded streets. And so creating a potentially slippery slope of just requests for parking programs without significant issues like the ones I identified at Regency, we believe could create some significant operational issues for us in the city and create a bad precedent moving forward. And finally, when it comes to evaluating what we can or cannot do related to the Olivia Project, we want to be careful that we're being consistent with single-family dwellings versus multifamily dwellings, and that we're not treating either of those types of residents different under the law. And I think there is some gray in potentially starting parking programs related to a yet-to-have problem related to the Olivia if we were to move forward with something today. Again, our recommendation is not that we never do anything, it's that let's wait until we have it constructed, let's wait until it's occupied, and let's use data at that point in time to see if we have an issue. I have experience with parking programs in the city of Venetian, our downtown, and a lot of times, perception is not reality when it's finally developed and built. And I would much rather address the problem when we have the data to support the direction we need to go in from a parking perspective, citywide, this being potentially one of those areas, than just to move forward now with the perceived problem. Staff is confident that we would have ample time when that is built to then enact, if needed, a parking program. It is not like some cities where if parking becomes a sniff and issue, they have to actually build parking dwellings. I had this issue in the city of Napa. You need a lot longer runway when that's required. I think in the city of Clayton, regardless of the size of a potential parking issue, it would always be around a parking program and enforcement. And so those can be constructed relatively quickly, and thus, we believe it's just not prudent at this time to evaluate it and to wait the two to three years or so until we're ready to have the data back whatever direction we may take. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Anybody wish to...
I was just curious, you mentioned that this was driven by a public request. I seem to recall that there was a survey. Was that included? That wasn't included in the staff report? Sorry, I meant survey. I said survey because I was thinking about the survey you just talked about. I meant petition.
Yeah, we didn't include the petition in the staff report. The reason it was brought forward was the request of the vice mayor. You know, we typically don't bring forward agenda items just based on public comment. We wait for council to give us direction, and that direction was from the vice mayor. So that's where we moved it forward. We didn't include that public request in the, in the agenda item.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not sure if... Go ahead. Thank you. I'm not sure if the public has read your staff report. Could you kind of give us some highlights of the financial costs that you've enumerated that might exist if we tried to put something like this together?
Yeah, this is the inefficiency I'm talking about when you kind of enact an initial program. You know, in talking with the chief, we really would need to cover both sides of the week to enforce this properly, to have a true parking enforcement. Because of that, it probably isn't a full FTE on each side of the week, but we didn't don't have an issue, we don't have the ability to really hire portions of people in a really good manner. Additionally, we looked at potentially contracting out, but again, the size and the scope really doesn't allow it to be advantageous for even contractors to come in because we don't have enough scale in this area yet. And so what, we don't have the classification of CSO as I outlined in the staff report, but I looked at other agencies, including a few of my former agencies that did, and just looking at the cost of two of those fully benefited CSOs and a vehicle annually was roughly a quarter of a million dollars. Now, is that high relative to what could be initially a small parking program? Yes, but it goes back to the inefficiency of only doing a small parking program. That's why staff is really, another reason why staff is, recommendation is to pause, let the development get built, because at that time, we may have bigger issues broadly beyond just the development in the city that we want to address in parking, whether that be looking at metering in certain areas or no overnight parking in certain areas and/or additional enforcement, where two CSOs at that cost spread out broadly over the city in different areas to address issues may be less of a burden on any parking programs we would create in certain neighborhoods and/or as the city's budget as a whole. And so that's where we just feel like a pause is a better way for us to evaluate overall the best way to do a program in the future. overall the best way to do a program in the future.
Yeah, I had a couple of... Can you hear me? I feel like I can’t. No, I don’t think it’s on.
You can hear me.
You can? Okay. You can hear me? What? Swing my... No, I just felt like I couldn’t hear myself before I...
It’s loud.
Can you hear me now? No. Okay. Oh, there we go. So I just want some clarification. There I am. It was the former vice mayor, Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, I think I said at that, then Vice Mayor Diaz, and now Mayor Diaz.
You said Vice Mayor.
Yes.
So, some of the questions that I had earlier today, I just, I did want to address in the public forum, and one was kind of in conjunction with the cost. So would the residents who engage in the parking permit program bear some of those costs?
Yes, at what level is ultimately determined by your council. As we talked about, levels of subsidy, talks about the level of enforcement that we would do would determine the full cost. What was evaluated as an example in the staff report is if we did a full enforcement, as we talked about, even in its inefficiency, there’s a bigger burden potentially to the residents in a small parking program, although, as outlined in the staff report, your council has the ability to provide whatever level of subsidy you feel is in the public benefit.
Okay. Thank you. And the other thing is, if I remember correctly, this project was going to be built in phases, one structure at a time. So my other question was, are, is the entire parking lot being constructed as one building at a time? In other words, will there be 106 parking spots as one building at a time goes up? Do we know the answer to that?
I did not. I was in meetings, and unfortunately, didn’t have a chance to ask our community development director, but if she feels like being put on the spot now, I’m happy to have her come up and answer the question.
I guess she, I hope you don’t feel like you’re being put on the spot, but that was one of my other questions.
I do, but it’s okay. I’m tough. So I anticipate that it will not be, I anticipate that the parking will not be built as one phase. Right now, there are three parcels, one building and one parking lot on each parcel. So my expectation is that a certain number of parking stalls will be built alongside Building One on Lot One, a certain number of parking stalls will be built on Lot Two, next to Building Two, same thing for Lot Three.
Thank you. Appreciate it. That’s my last question.
I have one other question, actually. In the discussion about cost, I understand that the program that was envisioned in the staff report is quite robust, I would say. Are you aware what the incremental cost of the Regency program was when it was implemented? Is it in the same order of magnitude? Because I get this, in my recollection, it was implemented at a much lower rate, so I’m wondering if there’s optionality there, or if that was a consideration?
Yeah, that was a much lower rate. I think what we were concerned about as we look at adding additional programs is, again, we kind of cross a threshold where we want to do more enforcement, the more we would get, and so, it becomes, I think, a discussion for your council is really what is the level of service and enforcement that you would request on something like this. Our desire in the report was to do a true enforcement. If council feels like that’s not what they would want to do if we were to move forward today or another day with a program, we definitely can change that level of service, but I think we want to make clear to the community that expectation at that time, that if it is not truly dedicated enforcement, then the level of enforcement could be significantly less relative to the calls of service staff available and other things that may impact their ability to address any issues with the parking in those areas.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I’m just trying to get a sense of scale, because I, you know, my recollection is that the Regency program was implemented at a, you know, significantly lower amount, and it was, I’d say it was quite successful at the time and still is. So, just a consideration that what’s presented is, I think, is one option, and then there’s probably a range of other things based on what you just said on the level of, level of activity.
Correct. And again, why we think it’s best to wait to evaluate parking more broadly, even beyond just the one area, considering we don’t have any urgency to do this program today. Evaluating it more broadly, I think, allows for even greater sense of the optionality, as you said, council member, to parking enforcement broadly throughout the city, not just in this one specific zone.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one follow-up question. For any parking program that’s in a particular neighborhood, do you have to have 100% of the residents who adhere to that? So if we’re talking about Stranahan, do all of the houses in Stranahan have to have a permit? And if not, what is a penalty for not doing so?
Yeah, that’s a good question.
How can they opt out?
Yeah, I wasn’t here when that was created. I’ll look to the chief if he has any recollection, if we had any kind of vote or full participation at that time, or if it was more an optionality, if he knows. Chief wasn’t here either, so...
We had, we had a pretty extensive discussion, so I would just say broadly, the council has discretion on where it implements, but you, you can’t pick and choose. So once it’s implemented in a certain region, like you designated an area, then it applies to anyone in the area. So there’s essentially no opt-out.
Okay. Now that we’ve heard from the council to the staff, I’m now going to open it up for public comment, and I have a couple of cards here, and then we’ll see if there’s anybody online. First speaker is Gary Hood on the Olivia 8B item.
Happy New Year. Thank you for getting this matter on the agenda. It’s important to all of us that a parking permit program be established to help mitigate future problems caused by past council members. Catalano Pearson Wolf has supported the Olivia project on Marsh Creek. Thank you, Jim Diaz and Jeff Wan for doing the right thing and caring about our community. The lack of oversight enables parking to spill over into surrounding neighborhoods and downtown areas, which increases traffic, noise, inconvenience, while infringing on homeowners and renters’ rights to peaceful enjoyment. We’re not here tonight to litigate the project. We fully understand it has been litigated and approved, with 36 two-bedroom units and 45 one-bedroom units for a total of 81 units, and now another possible four units more could be added according to Mr. Jordan’s recent LoopNet post. What could go wrong? Well, to start off, with 1.1 parking spaces per unit won’t cut it for a project of this size. It was quoted by Dana Aries Ayers that a project of this size would impact the surrounding neighborhoods. Those aren’t my words, those are her words. I listened to the past council meetings, and I was appalled at the lame and embarrassing excuses they gave to the public on how the parking problem could be mitigated. Some have called it bullshit, and I tend to agree with them. Here are a few examples. A parking permit program would be established in Stranahan to accommodate a proposed crosswalk connecting Stranahan to Olivia. Bus passes for two years would be provided and paid for by Mr. Jordan. Mr. Jordan would develop a car ride share program at the Olivia project. Julie Pierce’s idea, let’s contact AT&amp;T and use six of their parking stalls. If those aren’t the stupidest ideas I’ve heard of and embarrassing, I guess I might be wrong. In addition, relying on a parking study that was out of Pennsylvania is an insult to all of our intelligence. Why not a study out of the Bay Area, and one that does not include a senior housing project? Because Mr. Jordan is still promoting this project on LoopNet as a senior housing project, which is a flat, which is a flat-out lie. Total misleading. In fact, if you look at the Resolution Number 072020, this project has no age restriction. We hope the council will provide staff direction to complete the parking permit program and bring them back to the council for consideration. We also suggest the council form a four-person committee with two council members and two community members from the affected areas to strategize and design a parking permit program for potential use. Let’s be proactive, not reactive. Brett, I disagree with your staff report that it would cost the city $1,000. We are not asking for traditional parking permit programs with stickers and fees attached to them. It’s time for the council to listen to their constituents. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Hood. Next is Keith Hayden.
Evening, Mayor and council. Thank you. Appreciate you bringing this before the public. I’m going to be redundant on some of the requests. I think certainly deciding, moving forward tonight is premature. I think much more information and research is necessary. As was pointed out, there’s quite a bit of development still required for this development. It’s going to be two to three years, and it’s going to be done in phases. And so, as a result, certainly the impacts are unknown at this time. Enforcement of a restrictive ordinance, I think, would have an impact on the downtown businesses and residents. So that’s one of the types of studies that would have to be done before any kind of an ordinance was actually approved. The cost of enforcing that ordinance would be one of the things to consider, and certainly the source of funding to cover that cost. The city is already, has a challenge to meet its budget needs, and so you need to look at the cost of adding any additional services and what the source of that funding would be before moving forward. The impact would also need to be analyzed on future development. We do have housing elements that do refer to the possibility of further development in Clayton so that we can meet our housing allotments, and we want to look at how this particular proposal would impact those future developments. And if the intent really is to discourage those developments, I think you’d have to analyze the impact it would have on what you’ve already submitted to meet your housing element, and what the cost would be to the city if the state ultimately determines that you’re out of compliance with the housing requirements. And you may not agree with those requirements, but you need to analyze what would be the impact to Clayton if you’re out of compliance, and are there other ways to meet that? So I think that’s part of the overall plan that you have to look at for the future development of Clayton, and all of this research is necessary before you can move forward on the actual ordinance that should be proposed, and even that probably should be on a limited time basis, and then analyze the impact it’s had on achieving the result that you desired. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hayden. Next is Dane Horton.
Thank you, Mayor Diaz and council. I appreciate the time to be able to voice my opinion on this, and it is an opinion, but I think it’s pretty valid. First off, I’d like to agree with Mr. Hayden that there are many things that needed to be researched for the impact that’s going to be happening to Clayton, all of which should have been done prior to the city approving it in the first place. They let this developer slash owner get away with a lot of things, a lot of reports that he wasn’t required to do, impact, environmental impact, it just bypassed many of them, and it should have been done and done correctly. Secondly, as far as waiting until the project is built and then check and see if we got a problem, why not now approve the parking so that immediately upon finding out that it is an issue, the law’s on the books, it can be implemented? If he wants to wait to implement it until the first phase is done, fine, but why wait? We have opportunity now, it’s before the council, to figure out what we’re going to do. I don’t believe that Pennsylvania report is accurate. For all I know, they did it for an Amish community. But the bottom line is, it’s not an accurate report for this Bay Area, okay? So that being said, I think that, first off, the reports should have been taken care of long before it was approved, and he shouldn’t have had so many waivers to push this along. That the city council at the time should have listened to their constituency, because I was at those meetings, and there was 95% opposing it from the city, and they pushed it through anyway. And then, thirdly, I think it’s a smart move, now that it has been pushed through and approved, I think it’s a smart move to preempt this whole parking possibility, which in my case, I believe will be an issue, because it goes right across the street to Stranahan, and you’ve got that little trail there that goes to South... Easy. Yes, thank you. And it also goes right around the corner to all the city parking, to the parking lot behind Ed’s. All of these different areas will be impacted, and so, that’s my two cents worth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. Next we have, I think it’s Doug Rogers. If I made a mistake, let me know.
Mr. Perbulo’s video, he states there are 106 parking spots when I was attending the meeting on the project. The original plan showed 106, but Mr. Jordan admitted they had not accommodated garbage bins or recycle bins. And when that was accommodated, it would bring it down to 90 spaces, okay? You continue to say 106, but during the meetings, it was 90. To clarify the parking problem, I present the following scenario. There are 45 one-bedroom units, minimum 45 cars. People in Clayton have one car per adult. Even if it was a senior complex, minimum 55 years of age, I don’t know anybody or any couple that are 55 that both of them don’t own a car. Clayton is not easily accessed by mass transit, okay? So that would, if one of the half-lost units, our husband and wife, there’d be additional 23 cars, 68 cars. On the 36 two-bedroom units, probably 72 cars. When half of those two-bedroom units have the second bedroom with a person of driving age, it increases it to a total of 90 cars, okay? Once again, the two-bedroom units are going to use up all 90 spaces available. The total number would be 158, so it’s essentially 58, you know, or more cars having to overflow. Mr. Jordan’s study, once again, as mentioned, was done in the Pennsylvania senior complex, and he billed it as a senior complex, just like he billed the parking spaces as 106 units. It was more palatable to the public, right? But turns out, it was not accurate, okay? If anyone thinks Stranahan isn’t going to be impacted by overflow parking, then why is there a crosswalk planned from the Olivia to Stranahan? Really, it’s, it doesn’t make sense. Mr. Perbulo states it wouldn’t be prudent for us right now to solve a problem we don’t have, so the good news is we can wait, and we can see and adapt and adjust. Well, I truly think that in three years from now, you could give the same talk. We don’t have the money, it’s not going to work, we need to look it over, you know, citywide, you know, it’s an excuse. We need to move forward and get this going. So when the people are impacted in Lower, Easy and Stranahan, there’s a mechanism to avoid the problem. We need to be proactive, not reactive. The downtown merchants also will have a problem, because the restaurants, which need parking available in the evening, are going to have the overflow, which is going to create the worst scenario for them. They won’t have people available to park, and voila, they won’t have people frequenting their businesses. So anyway, I’m out of time, but I encourage you to vote to advance a parking permit program. You know, once again, not saying what it would be, but we need to move forward with getting something on the books. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Pamela Rogers.
Thank you for having me. I saw Mr. Perbulo’s video where he says, “Thanks for your question about parking at the Olivia. It’s actually 106 spots that are dedicated to that area for, at the Olivia. That’s within code and what we believe will be good.” be good. At this point, we don't think we're going to have an issue with this problem. We need to see it as the project is built and the residents come in. We need to evaluate what's going on a couple of years from now and take action then." It wouldn't be prudent for us right now to solve a problem we don't necessarily have. So the good news is we can wait and we can see and adjust. My point, this is as per your video, sir. My point is, there are 106 spaces, and yes, this has been stated by my husband and Gary Hood, and I don't mean to be redundant here, but when you take 106 spaces, that's less than 1.1 area per car, or per unit. And how can you look at these numbers and say that it will be good? Well, no one will be able to have a guest to visit overnight, have a gathering, or have more than one vehicle per unit. Since there are 36 two-bedroom, two-baths, there will certainly be more than one vehicle per unit. This is already a 36-space deficit with just this evaluation. And your statement of, "We don't think we're going to have or will have an issue with parking," we need to think this through. Instead of just thinking, look at the real issue and put yourself in this situation. Where will you park when you want to visit all your new friends that you've made are living in this new apartment building with all these wonderful new apartments? We need to evaluate what's going on, and in a couple of years when the project is up, to really know if we need to take any action. This is where we absolutely need to be proactive. The problem of parking presents itself in full view from where I stand. Waiting till the project is built and people are getting to fights and squabbles over who has a parking space is outrageous. We need a solution. We need it now before our city is turned into San Francisco or Oakland. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next public comment is from David Miller.
Miller.
There we go. Thank you, sir.
This is impromptu. Hello, everybody. I do not have prepared remarks, but I found this sitting at my house when I got home today, and I did a little research, and I went online and I looked at the approved plan for this. And somebody mentioned earlier that this was going to be developed in stages, and Site One, according to the approved plan, has 30 units and 27 parking spaces. Site Two has 26 units and 31 parking spaces. This is according to the plan online. Site Three has 28 parking spaces for 25 units, most, over half of which are double two-bedroom units. So my question is, that adds up to 86 parking spaces. So can anybody tell me where those other 20 spaces are? Or in Stranahan, maybe? That's 81 units with 117 bedrooms. How many people here don't have a car for every adult in their house? Seriously? Is it unreasonable to expect that at least some of these units are gonna have more than one occupant? I don't think so. And according to the plan as it sits now, there is simply no place for those cars to go, except into the surrounding neighborhood. And this doesn't affect all of Clayton equally. This is predominantly borne by the adjacent neighborhoods of Stranahan and Clayton and the downtown area. Now, I'm mindful of your comments about the cost, and I can't disagree with you that we don't need this today. But what I do think we need today is a plan for how to implement something like this. Because if we're trying to pretend that there aren't gonna be 40 or 50 cars that are gonna spill over into the neighborhood, we're just kidding ourselves. It's gonna happen. We're gonna face it. It might be staged in, it might come in slowly, but it's coming. So maybe we don't put it in today, but we need to have a plan. We need to figure out how we're gonna pay for it, how we're gonna implement it. Thank you.
Okay, the last card that I have is from, I think it's Wendell LaFilla. No, Wendy. You made your I really long.
I'm used to signing charts all day.
Thank you. Apologize.
Hi. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I came with my wonderful neighbors. I live in Stranahan. You guys have met me before. I've worked with Councilmember Juan for a while. So I super appreciate you guys even trying to do something here. My feeling, and I can speak for some of my neighbors, I feel like, yes, this, I was at all those meetings. I didn't miss anything. I stood up, I talked, I tried hard to prevent this from happening. Here it is. So now we move forward. So we move forward. What do we do? Well, as a neighbor, I feel like our feelings weren't heard very well. Whether they were heard and just not listened, or there was nothing you could do, I don't know what it was. But would it be too hard just to get something going? And the reason why is, it's just you're kicking the can down the road. It's really all you're doing. And I feel like it's disrespectful, especially to Stranahan. I'm not talking about for the businesses. Everybody's gonna affect this, obviously. But would it be too hard just to be like, "We got you. Like, don't worry, guys. We'll get it. Come up with a plan," whether it's, we don't know what it is yet. We don't know. It could be a gate. It could be a crosswalk. It could be a light. I don't know. But we're gonna do this together as a team. We're gonna work with you guys. We get it. Because I'm gonna tell you right now, we already deal with it with the downtown events, and we know that. That's part of living there. People park there for all of the events, and we get it. There's trash in front of our garbage, I mean, and our lawn, dog poo everywhere. People are disrespectful. They park up on the curb, they move. I mean, they just, we deal with it. It's, we get it. That's where we live, and we're okay with it. My point is, we can't do anything about that, but this is just, it's, the evidence is there. It's gonna happen. Everybody's already said it, and that's pretty much everything I was gonna say anyway. But I have little kids. There's probably 70 kids, 60 to 70 little kids that are in there, that almost get hit, sometimes when parents are coming home, because they're out running around, and, you know, it's, it's just, it's a very popular unit. And so I just, I feel like, maybe after giving everything that's happened, would it be too hard just to maybe get something going and show us that you guys kinda care about it a little bit? And it's not just about making money and building something and growing the town. Let's take care of each other. That's all. So, thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. And my apologies again for misreading your name. Next up is Bill Walcott.
Everybody leaves the microphone on, because they figure that we won't know how to turn it off and on. Thank you again for having the opportunity to speak. One correction, I know this city manager's staff report said that this is only gonna impact Stranahan. That's not true. There's gonna be spillover into Dable Villies, Lower Easely, and all the downtown. And we don't need to design this program tonight. That should be done in the future. And as you know, Mr. Mayor, timing is critical in politics, and this is the time. You don't want to try to put this cat back in the bag after the people move in. You've got people here tonight that want you to move forward with a parking program, have it implemented before these people move in, and you've got, they can't even park in front of their house. And then you're gonna have both sides down here, and it's gonna become a more difficult political decision. It's an easy decision tonight. You don't need to design the program tonight. Just move forward with the process, you know? And this is Clayton. And every time there's been a serious issue, I've been involved in Clayton politics for over 35 years, and every time there's a serious issue in this town, we form a committee, and we let the citizens solve the problem. You could form, you could appoint two council members, have a representative from each one of the neighborhoods, Stranahan, Easely, Dable Villies, maybe somebody from the downtown, and put together a program. We don't need to spend a bunch of money with bureaucrats sitting around on a table with a bunch of consultants figuring out how to drive the cost up on this program. And yes, there will be a problem. Anybody that thinks that there's not gonna be a problem when people move into Olivia, that they're only gonna have one car, is a fool. You know it's gonna be a problem. Why not address it now? And it wouldn't be fair to the developer to wait either. The developer needs to know that the city's putting together a program. The residents that move in need to know that the city's gonna put together a program to restrict parking in these neighborhoods. So if they move in with two cars, he's gonna have to tell them, "You have to sell one of those cars and buy an electric bicycle." Or not move into these apartments. It's completely ridiculous. I disagree with the city manager. He's already seen what happened. We took the reactive approach. When the developer of Olivia started the grading, he was overwhelmed with complaints. I mean, why would he recommend, again, to wait until you got a problem, and then have all these people come down here and try to talk to you folks, and have you change your mind, and not require, or not restrict the parking in those neighborhoods? Even though I don't have a lot of compassion for the developer, it still wouldn't be fair to him. So I know I'm running out, I hate that clock, that clock up there. It needs to be right there in front of you, because I could talk for a half hour on this subject, because it's so ridiculous, and I disagree with the city manager. He knows better. I thought he'd learned from the other rollout on Olivia with the grading that we can't be reactive. And you know that, Mr. Mayor and the council. You don't want to be reactive. You want to be proactive. And I'm out of time, and I'm gonna honor that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, the final card that I have is from Randall Waterhouse.
Thank you, committee. I appreciate you having this hearing. And I've been, I was talking to my wife. We moved here in 1999, so I'm almost in, on Halloween, almost a 25-year citizen. I think I've been to three of these meetings. My personal opinion is this whole project was rushed through under the circumstances of COVID. I don't think the general population was aware of the whole project itself. When I talk to my neighbors and ask them their opinion about it, they know almost nothing. I ask them about the design. They see no artist's renditions of the project. And that's actually one thing I'd like to compliment Brett on, is I really appreciate his emails coming out and informing us of what's going on. I feel none of that was done for this whole project. And I'm not affected personally. I live in Upper Easely, but I feel for my neighbors, and that's why I'm here tonight, is I don't think it's fair for them. And I don't think this has been properly presented to our community. And I think if it were, which it now seems to be coming about, people are not happy about this, in that it wasn't handled in a manner. And Brett, I understand this isn't a problem now, but I say, look at Highway Four. Look at Ignacio. That was because developers were allowed to just develop. Schools weren't implemented, the highways weren't increased. And look, look at Ignacio. It takes me 40 minutes to get down Ignacio. And that's all I'm saying is, I think this, we need to take a step back and look at this. And especially this parking, I think it's something we really need to take a look at. Sorry, my time's up.
Thank you. Okay, I have no other cards. Anybody else in the audience wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, do we have anybody online that wishes to address this item?
There are no members online.
Okay. Well, then I'm gonna close. Oops, excuse, here we come.
Buena noche, don alcalde. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I was on the planning commission when this thing went through. So was Councilmember Cloven. Those meetings were packed to the gills. There was a lot of complaints, you've mentioned it, Councilmember Cloven, about how much opposition to some of what the council did last year. You barely had these seats filled compared to what was going on when the Olivia was in front of us. It went out the door. There was another item that was going on that year, or I'm sorry, the year before, when Councilmember Hayden was the mayor, and that was parolee housing. And I still remember the excuses we got for the procrastination. Councilmember Cloven, you were part of the planning commission when that issue came before you guys, and you punted. You guys didn't have the spine to deal with it. You did nothing. Came to the city council, and the excuse we got, "Oh, we were waiting for the county." Our city manager, you want to procrastinate, and somehow everything turns into, "I need more tax revenue. I need more FDE." Government begets government always, and no initiative. I listened to what Wendy said. This issue created so much division in this city, and the reason citizens felt the way they did and the election was so caustic, Councilmember Cloven, was because most of us felt that our council didn't give a damn about what we said, that our city manager at the time, our interim, I will never forget what he said to me, "This project will go through, and people will get over it." This is why people develop the attitude they have towards government. Government doesn't give a damn about its citizens, but it gets paid with my tax dollars. You have an obligation to get familiar with this city. I don't see it. You've not studied the history. You don't know what's going on here. I was very much behind you last year. I still am. But you have to get familiar with what happened in this city, and you can't ignore it. This is something that has created a lot of division. And for you to say, "You know what? It's not important to me right now. It'll be a problem in three years." All these people are here trying to tell you it will be. It will be a problem in my neighborhood. So, no one's asking you to come up with a program tonight, but to make up excuses for why you can't, and to instead have endless meetings because some nonprofit doesn't want to pay their fair share, and that's a priority of some, whereas all these citizens are really concerned about something else, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gavidia. And I have no other cards, and I don't see any other hands raised, and no one's online that has raised their hand, correct? Okay, thank you. I'm gonna close the public comment on this item and bring it back to the city council for any further discussion, because we are charged on this item to bring it back, discuss this street parking and other issues related for the Olivia project, and then provide some staff direction. So with that, council members. Mr. Juan.
Is there a way, I guess maybe I should, and thank you for all of your comments, and listening to your comments, I had some more questions that maybe I should have asked during staff question time, but I'll ask them now. Is there a way to adopt or give direction for a broad scope of action that has forward triggers? And I don't know if that's a good way to ask that question, but really, to put something, a framework in place that is like, if something happens, then something else happens. I don't know if that's even possible.
I don't know. I have to look towards the attorney. I may have to pass the mic to. I don't know.
Is the question clear?
Yeah, I don't know if, I'm thinking that through. I mean, I guess, in theory, you could create a resolution that has some triggers. I know you can't buy in future councils in certain things, but I don't know if that triggers that or not. Do you have any thoughts?
I would want more detail on what the triggers are and what we're really talking about before I could give an opinion.
Yeah, I get that. I mean, that's fair. There's just, I'm trying to think of what levers exist versus the specifics of those things. So I think the fact pattern would have to be fleshed out a little bit. But, you know, I, the issues that are raised by a number of our speakers, and, you know, the same ones that I think, they echo what was raised when this issue came before us a long time ago. It is deeply concerning that this impact, this future impact will happen. I tend to agree, but that's, again, just my opinion, not the opinion of the council, that this- that this, there will be a significant impact. And I, I am very interested in finding a way to mitigate that impact to the extent possible. I just, I'm not sure what the best path is. I do recognize that we do not have a problem that is extant now, but I do believe it is, is a near certainty that it will be in the future. So I am very interested in doing that. I'm, I'm still thinking about what the best ways to do that are and how to, how the city would operationalize or enact that. So that's just my, my quick thoughts on that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Trupiano.
Yes. Oh, you fixed it. Thank you. We don't have to share anymore. So thank you again for everyone's comments. They were heartfelt and I'm very concerned about this. And I know that, you know, it's not an issue yet. We understand that the project may be years away, if it's built at all. But I do think we need to have some kind of a program in place and I'm all for, not that I want to serve on it, but for forming another committee and taking a look. And, and I don't think it's just the impact of the Olivia. I think there is going to be, there's other projects. We have other things in the housing development, a housing element. We have new businesses coming into town. So I think it would behoove us to create a committee made up of citizens and council people and staff to take a look at the larger issue so that when it happens, we're ready and we have a plan in place.
Thank you.
I don't disagree with Councilmember, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Trupiano. And actually, I would like to serve on that committee. I don't, I don't have as many as you guys do. So yeah, I would actually be all for that one. And the reason why is because I know that there were several residents that are not only in the surrounding areas nearby, but also those that are in Dana Hills that have expressed issues with traffic coming through there, parking, et cetera. And I do have some concerns about our downtown businesses and the parking that happens down there. I might look to the city attorney to actually weigh in now and answer a couple of questions, if you may, or maybe just one, on, on what areas we really could enforce parking on. Forget about the number of, of full-time staff that we need. Are there any areas downtown that we cannot touch? For example, because they are public streets, are those excluded from us being able to put that in a parking program?
No, public streets would be allowed to be in a parking program.
Okay, good.
What I can't foresee happening though is prohibiting the Olivia project from parking downtown and allowing others to park downtown. That would be prohibited.
Okay. Okay. That's helpful. And then also how far this would extend. So does this go to the folks that live behind Endeavor Hall? Does this only go in front of the post office? Is this only the people who are in Upper Easely, Lower Easely? I think that all needs to be discussed. I am not inclined to spend a lot of money to have a consultant unless that's necessary to do a, to do some, go ahead.
So I can answer that question. I don't know about anyone on the council, but I've been doing this for 15 years and have an extensive background and can tell you, there are experts that understand parking in communities of all sizes that I've used before in various agencies, especially if you're looking to downtown parking, you're looking to metered parking, potentially you're looking to overnight parking. There are impacts, analysis and data that, to be very blunt, you don't get from a Google search, right? They have expertise in doing this for community after community to community. And I think it would be naive of us and penny wise and pound foolish to think that we, without experts by our side for this broader, citywide, potentially, parking analysis, that we could do it on our own. We are, some cities like San Francisco have experts built into their staffing. We obviously aren't near that big. Thus consultants are necessary to really do it well, or you end up with unintended consequences. And that is much more difficult to undo than the $75,000 or $100,000 a parking consultant might be to help us evaluate, if council so sees fit, a larger parking analysis and possibilities of what we could do broadly throughout the city.
And just to clarify, that is not to litigate the number of parking spaces that the Olivia has. It's just to figure out where this program, what makes the most sense for the parking program?
Well, I think park, again, why I stated in my earlier comments, why I want to delay, which is by no means because I don't think there may not be an issue. It's not because government doesn't care or any of the other, some of the other comments that were thrown my way. It's specifically because we need to take the time, if we're going to look at parking citywide, to understand holistically, as Vice Mayor mentioned, with other developments coming in, different businesses, the use, the generational shift of how cars are used. All of that needs to be taken into consideration when we look at parking broadly in the city. That's what these experts do for us. They'll allow us to have scenarios and different optionality, as Councilmember Wong articulated earlier. And then we can make an informed, clear and conscious decision down the line of how we deal with parking citywide that benefits all those impacted and doesn't inhibit or create unintended consequences to our businesses, other residents, any like legal issues with restrictions, as the city attorney mentioned. We can flush all that out with experts by our side to do this holistically and well. But again, to do that today with everything else, to me is, is not prudent to wait longer to have more data for them to analyze, to me is the prudent way you get the best program for the city as a whole.
And then an additional question then, for a parking program in the Stranahan neighborhood, I'll just throw that one out there. Is it necessary to still have that analysis from someone? Or could you have parking permits for them now? We now realize, I guess, that that would not be enforced because we don't have the people or the mechanism to do that currently. So what is the downside from doing that right now?
Downside is, I think residents are going to have a, a level of expectation of enforcement when you switch the code to allow for that parking program to happen in there. I think that could be one downside. Two, as I stated in my opening remarks, because we don't have a problem and we're making big assumptions, we don't have a basis like we did in Regency. So if I'm in a neighborhood next to a school now, I can ask for the same thing and we have no basis to say no if we approve Stranahan in that example. If I'm next to a park and haven't had an issue, I just don't want people to park in my neighborhood for any time. We don't have a basis to say no to that either. And we could end up with significant parking permits throughout the city, which is ineffective for us from a public parking standpoint, could be unintended consequences to the other issues. And then if we go to do a comprehensive parking study eventually and it wants to unwind that, that can become very difficult with the neighborhood because we, again, we didn't do it holistically. We kind of piecemealed it, as we've talked about in other items, together, instead of taking a broader look, taking the time, which we have, to make a much broader look citywide at what is our parking program citywide to deal with the variety of issues, some of which you mentioned, Councilmember Tillman, in other areas as well, that could benefit the city more broadly, benefit our businesses more broadly and variety of stakeholders that may be impacted, separate and distinct from the Olivia development, but just haven't risen to the level of voice that we're hearing right now.
And then I think my final question is, is it possible to have a community slash council committee? I mean, we're going to be committee to death, but is it possible to have that just to get input from residents from those different locations to be able to give to the consultant when and if we need one?
So typically what I've done in the past is when you get ready to launch what is usually a six-month process to eight-month process, depending on the severity and depth that you go, you have a variety of community meetings similar to you would, you know, for any type of development, right? And, and you get input from the community broadly in a variety of ways, in person, some online, you know, information, surveys, that, and, and the consultant helps guide and lead that in a productive way. To me, that's a more advantageous use of staff time because with subcommittees that are Brown Act connected, creates more staff that I don't have. And so I would much rather, again, if the desire is, the council is to evaluate parking in this area and more broadly, take the time, plan it out, hire the necessary consultant and build community engagement, a significant part of that project, to get that community impact, to the individuals that are experts that know how to get the data and ask the right questions, than make them be able to give us the best information to make the best decision.
Okay. Because I am empathetic to everyone that's in Stranahan's plight and, and granted, we can't change anything at all with what's been agreed upon and is already in place. But I am trying to understand better from them what their concerns are today, right? So we did hear from several people saying, you know, let's start today. How come not today? And let's plan for it. So I'm trying to understand what, what exactly in the plan are you looking for if we know that we're not going to be enforcing it now, right? So we're not saying, so, so.
And you guys are going completely around what I suggested.
Sir, sir, thank you very much. I understand. I understand. And the council now needs to decide what the best way is forward, which is what we're trying to do in the questions that we're asking staff. We're trying to, we took all of the information that you guys just gave us, your feedback, and now we're trying to figure out the best path forward for everyone. That's what we're doing right now. But it is not, unfortunately, it's not a give and take. I wish it was.
It just seems like.
Thank you. Thank you. You've all had your chance to speak and we're not going to create a dialogue between the council and the audience.
So then the only other question then I had is, what is the low-hanging fruit that we could give to Stranahan now, based on what you've heard tonight?
Yeah, my recommendation to council would be, we are going through a strategic objective process in February 6th, on February 20th, that drive, as I said in my email to the community this evening, that drives the future of Clayton, right? Part of it is to understand big and broad issues you want us to include in a, in a plan over the years. Part of it is to then continue to inform our five-year forecast and, and how we deal with deficits, right, through austerity or revenue measures. This can be one of those objectives if council chooses, is that we evaluate parking and its impacts to residents and businesses citywide, and then we can build that into our operating plan, right, is whether that's six months from now or a year from now, you know, it will be an objective that council publicly puts on my plate that then I know where that I need to get to within a certain amount of time. And, and then I can come back to you and tell you what I think the best operating path would be. And, you know, summary version is going to be, my recommendation would be to hire a consultant to do it well and right for all the residents and businesses in Clayton. Because I think that's how we get the most informed decision and how we can also be future-thinking with people that understand, you know, the best ways to handle certain issues and have seen the impacts intended and unintended. And, and I think that strategic objective conversation in the next month is a way to solidify that it will happen at some point, the evaluation and potential program would be my recommendation.
Thanks.
I, I just got to say, I think, I really want us as a council to move away from hiring a consultant as our first, as our first effort. And I, and I, I think part of it is because we've had, we've had some turnover, so some of the history isn't as top of mind to a lot of us that were here. And, you know, we talk about community engagement. We have community engagement. They're here. And not everything needs, like, it's just, it's very odd to me because we're talking about a specific thing and it keeps getting re-characterized as something that needs to be citywide. It really doesn't. Like, this is a discrete thing that is going to affect disproportionately discrete neighborhoods. And it really, we have to have that in mind when we're thinking about it. Not, not everything has to be blown up to this thing that it, it, it's not going to be the same in Jim's neighborhood or my neighborhood that it is going to be in Stranahan's neighborhood. It's very different. And those, those are just the nature of what we're dealing with. I think, you know, there are experts in this field. They are probably much smarter than us in these matters. But when it comes to our town and where we live and what we know, I think there are things that we probably have a better sense of just because of the 25 years of living in the same place. And so like, I, I, my questions earlier were more about like, okay, so what are our options? Like what, because I don't know what they all are. There's probably a number of ways you can go. And I actually thought of a scenario, a fact pattern that I, I can give context to my previous question. But, you know, downtown doesn't need to be a huge thing. I mean, our downtown is like a couple of square blocks. You have a, you have a sign that says, you know, parking is limited to five hours. It's not going to impact any business downtown, but it will prevent people from parking there overnight. Problem solved. Like, that's, it's, I, and I'm not saying that's the best answer. It's, it, it could be an answer and there's probably other potential answers. But like, there are low-key ways. Stranahan has one entrance. I mean, you could put two signs on it that's, you know, say residents and then we have, we already have the, we already have the, for lack of a better term, infrastructure to support that because we do it already. And like, these are low-cost, low-effort ways. And there's probably others I think it's worth talking about because I don't, I don't, I don't solution that well on the spot, but I, I do think that this is a, the solvable problem or a solvable situation that may not be a problem right now, but will almost certainly be. I guess the fact pattern that I was thinking of is could you create an ordinance that has enough, a future effective date? And then, so for example, you would do something now, you'd say, we, you know, you do all the regular ordinance procedures and you say, as of January 1st, 2028 or something, this will go into effect unless some action is taken. So if you do nothing, it goes or else it'll, it'll, you have a way to sunset. I mean, that seems like a way that you could trigger something in the future to give comfort to the residents today, but not actually burden the, you know, create a huge burden today, but it, you know, that, I'm trying to find, see if that's even possible. So that, that's my question.
I think in theory you could. It could always be revoked, obviously, in advance. And then I think it just, as the city manager has talked about quite a bit, there's just no existing issue. And so then you're presuming by that date, there'll be an existing issue.
Or just discretion. I mean, because one of the questions was, you know, if we do it here, then we have to do it other places that ask. And I, I don't think that's true. I think it's always discretionary. The basis to say no or to decline is essentially us representing the residents. I mean, there are a lot of schools in the neighborhood who do, I mean, I have driver, I have, I have kids who drive now, which is crazy. There's restricted parking all around schools. There's restricted parking around trails. There's restricted parking in a lot of places, not in Clayton. We only have the one, so there's that. But in other areas, it's, it's fairly common that these happen. And I think a lot of times they do occur because of residents' desire for that to happen. And, you know, the comments about a little bit forward-thinking are, it was the first thing that I thought about is because when I first wanted to, for some reason, sit on this side of the table, it was because of parolee housing. It was because I was so upset that this council did not think ahead and take action. And so, you know, that is top of mind for me. Like, is this something that we can address in the near term so that in the future, the residents have that comfort, that they know that, you know, we are looking out for them? So that, that's, I don't, again, no solution, but just a, a thought process.
The only, I'm sorry, you go.
Yeah, I was the chair of the planning commission. We were here till 1:00 in the morning in a meeting in December, then a few weeks later we came back. We were, a month later we came back and went till, till midnight on the, on the Olivia. And I'm on the record and video saying, there's going to be a problem in Stranahan. You can't, you can't help it. I mean, we're just looking at the, the number of apartments and the number of spaces, there's going to be a problem. There's going to be overflow. So I, I just, I just want to be, because it was legal. That's why I was approved.
Yeah, jam through when.
I'm not, it, it, it was legal. It, it was, it was approved because it was legal and, and there is, I'm just.
Pardon me.
It was approved because it was legal. And I know that there's going to be a challenge. So I, I want to acknowledge that I am on the record of saying that there's going to be a challenge with parking. And I think there's a solution that needs to be had. I think we need to talk about what the solution might be. I actually don't even mind having residents suggest what they think the solutions might be. Whatever solutions are brought forth, whether it be through a subcommittee or through, through residents, is still going to have to go through vetting, through a residents, is still going to have to go through vetting, through a consultant, and through our attorney at some point, just for the legality of it. And it has to go through our police chief regarding the cost for enforcement. So there are, there are some, there are some aspects of this that is going to be required. But I don't mind the conversation about what those, the solutions might be, because the, but does it happen, happen right now? I personally think that there are, there is some thought process about putting this as a forefront in our budget for 2024, or 24, 2425. When we, when we sit here as a council and we look at what's important to us, we're having a bunch of residents tell us this is important, well, let's set aside some funds for that to happen in our budget for the next year. If that's, if this is something that we desire to take care of, then let's set it aside to make that happen, and then we'll put the, put the committee, because we prioritize it then as a council, that sure, let's make that happen next year. But that, that's, we've got some big conversations to happen in, in, in March, February, March, April, May, and June for our budget, and if this rises to the top with the cream, let's put our money where our mouth is and, and take care of these citizens in the budget then.
Thank you. Any other, yes?
Yeah, the only thing I was going to say was regarding signage going up, is I think that we have to be very clear, because this happened to the mayor and I when we were on the committee up on Keylock Way. And remember those residents.
Right, and I was going to mention that, but thank you.
Yes, there were residents that were rightfully so very upset, because there was a dog that was killed and a homeowner who was actually hit by a speeding car that did not see them on their cul-de-sac as they were in the street. And we had several months of meetings with those residents as a subcommittee, and they want enforcement up there. And the chief can speak to this on how often they are called, because, yes, we painted the curb, and we had lots of input from those residents up there on what they wanted to see in their neighborhood. Do we want to put a fence up? Because they were upset that people were coming up to the overlook up on Keylock to see the sunsets. That's where they get a lot of their traffic from, and the debris that, that people are leaving behind. And hearing their concerns, they didn't want to put up a fence to block people from being able to see it, because then that would ruin their own sunsets, right? Do you want to put up another fence to prohibit people from going out there on that trail? They didn't want to do that either. Plus, we couldn't block access to the trail. Then we put, we painted the curb red in front of that same area, and the number of phone calls that the PD department gets about the number of people who are not adhering to the red curb, they're parking illegally. The, they want the PD to sit up there all day, and they cannot. So talk about enforcement, and we have to really think about that, putting signs there. I don't know how many signs up there saying, "Do not park here. The curb is red." We all know, we all learned when we got our, our driver's license at 16. You can't park where a red curb is, but people still do, and they want them to be ticketed every day, all day. And so I think we just need to be very mindful that if we do put up signs, and I'm not opposed to doing it, but I do need the residents in those areas that have them to realize that the PD is not going to keep coming every time you call, because they have other important business to take care of in town. And I know that there's a sense of frustration, and the mayor can speak to that, too. We get text messages and, and phone calls and emails from residents that are up there on Keylock who are upset, because the enforcement doesn't happen when they want it to all the time. So I would just say, please keep that in mind, and you can add more to that if you'd like.
Well, I want to chime in on that. I thought that worked out very successfully. Council, remember, Tillman and I worked on that policy to help fix that thing, and working with the police department and the city staff. And I think it is pretty well quieted down now.
I don't know, has it?
Yeah, very, very successful.
The chief is shaking, he's saying it has not quieted down, meaning they're still getting calls?
I, I think you will always get calls. You're always going to have people that violate. But, and the same, I think you probably still get calls at Regency. I mean, I look at the logs of how many tickets you write, and every one, I'm like, that, I mean, both good and bad, I suppose. But even if it, you know, if it's our lowest priority of enforcement, because I think, you know, if there's a, if there's other police activity going on, I would expect parking enforcement to probably be pretty low on the, on the totem pole. But it is a, it would be a passive activity that is always acting as a deterrent, because most people want to follow the rules, most people, I think. And so, you know, they will do so. You will have those that either are ignorant or are making a choice. And if it's able to be enforced at the time, and it, it, you know, you can sequence it in with other activity, then that's great. And if you can't, then I think the residents understand that. But it would, it would be a constant deterrent, which has value. I mean, it's not going to be perfect. It wouldn't, you're, you're going to call, and sometimes you're not going to get a response, or you'll get a response that says, "We'll get to it when we get to it," and that's just kind of the thing. But I do think that that is, even that has a value, probably, because right now it's nothing. So, and I don't know what that would be. We'd have to talk about it more. But that, it is. I mean, I think when that happened, when the situation at Keylock happened, you know, we responded. When Regency happened, we know that these things become issues, and this, I think this, no one is, I don't think anyone's saying that this wouldn't be an issue. So it seems it kind of behooves us to, to do something.
Okay. To kind of sum up, I mean, I, I don't know what my other colleague, yes, we used to get a lot of calls relative to the parking on Keylock, but that, probably that's maybe the third-most issue, hardest issue we got. In my experience, the parolee housing was number two. This one has passed all of them. I have not gotten more calls, emails, texts. I can't go to a coffee shop if somebody doesn't walk in there and say, "What's the latest down there?" This is a real hot, top-burner item, and we need to somehow come to consensus on how to address it. And I think council member Tillman and council member Juan all have had various experiences in dealing with a council citizen committee to address Keylock, to address the parolee housing. This one, I think, I could really support something that would get a couple of council members and some citizens to address this, because it's not a problem now. But from what I hear, from people, their concern is downstream. And maybe it doesn't take but, you know, a couple of years for this project, if it even comes to fruition, that it's going to be, it's going to create a problem, not only in the immediate area, but it's going to flow over into the downtown. And so, you know, I would support some sort of a council citizen committee to look at this thing and, and address it. I don't know what anybody's else think. And maybe, because parking is becoming such an issue, maybe we need a parking attendant. I don't know. You know, somebody that, that's all their job is, is to enforce the parking. Not now, but it will be in the future. So I don't, I don't, I don't know if that's the case, but it's something that needs, it needs to be explored. So, anyway, anything else to add?
Just, I was just looking, just to satisfy my own curiosity. We had, through October, because you gave us all the stats of the citations, we had 17 citations up in Keylock, and in Regency through October, we had 195. Other, other citations, all other citations, I think, for traffic, or, sorry, all other parking citations, my bad, was 116. So, you know, there's, there's still people that will obviously park where they're not supposed to. And when we're able to, we enforce it, and when there's other priority items, we do those. So that seems to be how it goes.
Council member Clovin.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't disagree with you. I think that a community conversation and with a couple of council members would be something that is appropriate. We have time. We have three years before this thing is built. If this is important to us, then over the next four months, as we get into conversations about our budget, conversations about our deficits, conversations about next year's budget, and this rises to the top, then we, as a council, will choose to fund something for that review. Because whatever that committee creates is going to be needed to be reviewed by staff, going to be reviewed by a consultant, and going to be needed to be reviewed by an attorney. So there's got to be funds for all that. And so I am suggesting at this time that if this is important over the next four months, then we're going to put it in a budget and make a line item for next year, and then we will create the committee at that time.
Thank you. Anybody else to have any comments? Because I think, at least in a couple of sentences here, we have some direction, I believe. Is that?
I don't have a major, I need a clearer reality. Are we waiting till strategic planning in the budget to firm it up? Or, I haven't heard definitively, I think, three Claire individuals agree on one idea and timing. So, so we don't. We have a lot of ideas, but I don't have direction based on the way we need to do this.
Go ahead.
Yeah, and again, I'll reiterate what I said earlier, that I think it is time now to form that committee, whoever wants to be on that committee. And then we will address any funding needs, if there are, when we have our goal-setting and budgeting sessions. That's my recommendation.
Anybody else?
To clarify, so form a committee and then, like, set priorities during the, okay, I'm, I'm on board with that.
Okay. And I agree with council member Clovin. It's going to be an issue that's going to take all of the things, the piece parts to make it happen. And now's the time to start looking at it. And, and we'll be ready for it, at least in the three-to-four-month timeframe, when we have to face the budgetary matters.
So I was talking with the city attorney. A little more clarity on what we mean by a committee for us to come back. So this is a standing Brown Act committee? This is a?
Ad-hoc committee to take citizen, citizen input, come up with conceptual ideas to advance.
So you would need an item to come back for you to select who's going to be on the ad-hoc committee, and then those two are going to go, how are we going, how do you presume we get the community members? Do you have a desire of way?
You could not have community members.
There's got to be some interest from the council to be a participant. Go ahead.
I just want to clarify, you could not have community members on the committee in order to keep it an ad-hoc committee. It would just have to be two members of the council with a limited duration. So this committee could not go on for more than a year, and we would need to limit.
Thank you. Anything else? Jeff, you had any more?
Oh, I was just going to reiterate. I was on board with what council member, or Vice Mayor Chupiano had described.
Council member Tillman.
I think I was agreeing with both the mayor and with Peter, but, or council member Clovin. I just need to understand what you just now mentioned, Mala. When you say that if we have the ad-hoc committee, we couldn't have any citizens on it?
And it, correct. If you wanted a committee that included council members and citizens, it would be subject to the Brown Act. It would not be an ad-hoc committee, which is not subject to the Brown Act. So I just want to be clear about that.
How did we do, how did we do the public safety committee?
They're not officially on the committee. You just have people participating, and you can have a dialogue.
Strong voices.
That's fine.
Yeah, but we were, we were the two council members, and we just had meetings that they could join and give us their input.
Okay, well, and it sounds like the general consensus is that this committee, however ad hoc or permanent, with two council members, so we don't affect the Brown Act. And then somehow, how do we integrate citizen participation?
So my, my recommendation would be that my office sometime in the next month or two brings back an item for you guys to create the ad-hoc committee. You create the ad-hoc committee, the ad-hoc committee can last, as the city attorney said, for up to a year. Your ad-hoc committee can then coordinate town halls, for lack of a better term, for people to come to and give you feedback related to whatever topic specific on parking. You would take that and essentially bring it back to council with updates on what you've heard. And then, as you go through the strategic planning and budget process, my assumption is, it rises high enough up, or then it becomes actionable for me to do something with it, depending on what that is, we don't know yet. And then we go from there, and those two ad-hoc members would have the detail from the community to provide additional input to council as those discussions were being had, is how I envision it. Let me know if you think something different.
That sounds good to me. Yep. I think we're all in agreement. The chief's going to add something.
The one thing I would request is, as this is being discussed, that we have input.
You're invited.
Thank you. One of you mentioned, like, an hour limit on the downtown, and I would rather see, like, no overnight from X time until X time, because there's no one to monitor if someone's been down there for three or four or five hours. But if they're parked there after 3:00 AM or whatever, that's obviously easy to enforce. So, just little details like that, that I would like to kind of throw our input in.
All right. Thank you. Any more comments? I think we've given the city manager and staff direction to the point where we can come back with something a little more concrete. And I want to thank all of you for giving us your comments on this, and obviously we'll be back for future discussion. Thank you. That completes item number 8B.
Pardon me, Mayor. We do need to act on the direction given.
I think, I think council or staff has indicated they have.
We don't need a vote. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. We have completed item 8B.
Are we, we need to go back to 8A, or are we doing a recess?
I want to hear back from the staff and see what the recommendation they have, because we threw a lot at them. I don't know what, I don't know what the formation of the committee ought to look like, but it definitely needs a channel to the community, so they can provide input. So, and I don't know how we do that yet. All right. Item 8B is done. We will now move to item, action item 8A, which is the employment agreement with our city chief of police, and to approve a three-year employment agreement with Richard McKeech, and as our police chief, for the term of June 30th, 2024, through June 30th, 2027. And we turn it over to the executive assistant to the city manager and HR manager. Amy, you're on.
Good evening, Mayor Diaz and council members. If you recall, this is an item that we spoke about in closed session on December 5th, 2023. The details have now been provided more explicitly. High level, we're looking at a 4% annual increase. This is a three-year agreement. This would commence July 1st of 2024. That's meant to pick up where the current contract is expiring, and I'm certainly open to any questions you may have.
Have any details changed from what we discussed prior?
No, they have not.
I'm good.
We do have council member Tillman.
I think council member Tillman had to excuse herself for a moment. We should probably wait till she returns.
All right. Have you completed your portion?
I have.
Okay. Council members, any question of the executive assistant to the city manager?
No, I think we'll just wait, let's wait till she returns.
We'll wait. She got way late over there with the citizen.
One thing I can add, Mayor, while we wait, is just how happy I am as the city manager with the police chief's performance. He continues to do a great job, continues to.
He's right there, he could hear you.
Yeah.
Continues. Nothing he hasn't heard from me before.
Yeah.
That he continues to work well with staff. I'm pleased to have him as our police chief for the city of Clayton, and, and glad to definitely support the action that council is taking before you today.
Okay. If she doesn't come back in 30 seconds, I'm moving forward.
We, we have time, we're okay. Let's.
No, we have another, we have to go into closed session. Okay.
You can take probably public comment if you'd like, Mayor. That might give you one more thing out of the way of it.
Okay. Let's, yeah, let's go to the public comment. Is there anybody? I don't have any cards. Anybody online?
There are no cards, and there's no one with their hands raised.
All right. Public comment on this item is closed. Now the clock is timing. I will wait 30 seconds.
You're moving it along.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, right. The city manager gave me a target quit time tonight.
Yeah.
And I want to compliment him on that. And by the way, by the way, I want to thank the, Amy, and of course now our new city clerk. We got new badges for everybody, and new business cards, so that we're all up to date now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We're now on 8A.
Thank you.
And we've already heard a brief report from the executive assistant to the city manager. There was public comment already taken. Nobody talked. So now it's our turn. You're all on.
My only question was, were there any details that changed from our last? And the answer was negative. And that was the extent of my questions. I don't know if you have any questions.
Move approval?
Council member Clovin.
I move approval.
Second.
It moved and seconded. Councilmember Clovin, Councilmember Juan, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. On that motion, Councilmember Clovin.
Aye.
Tillman?
Aye.
Juan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Trupiano?
Big aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Yes. Great job. Continue to do it. You know, I don't care if anybody, it's, it's after the fact now, but there was a gap there for a while in, and we're not talking about parking enforcement, but traffic enforcement. And that has really picked up. And now have two motor officers capable and things are moving along. Thank you. Okay. That concludes item eight A. And now we will go into council items for future agenda items. Who's up?
No, you're looking at me because you're waiting for me to say it, say it again. But it's my same request. I know that there were some questions on my request to have an item brought back for us to discuss possible censure of council members, as well as to having our city attorney look into possible issues with council members and their treatment of staff. Their question was how much that would, could possibly cost. And I think that would come out in the discussion, as we hear, with the scope of what that is, and then decide whether or not we would move forward. But barring going into more details until we bring it back, I know in other items, we don't discuss what the cost would be until we actually bring back the, the item for an agenda to discuss it. And I think it's more appropriate to do that at that time. So that's my request.
Anybody else? I have one that's sort of impacting all of us. I know I heard from Councilmember Tillman and a couple of residents up in her area. And now, the problem has moved down the street, is now in my court. And that is field mice. And they have inundated. My neighbor has caught almost 100 in his, it's an issue.
I caught 40 this weekend.
Huh?
I got 40 this weekend.
Right. And I've, I've talked with the city manager on this. And I've also been in contact with the mosquito and vector district. And in fact, I had a call back from one tonight, which I'll call him in the morning. But we're gonna set up, hopefully, a presentation. They can give advice on what to do to, to address this. But I've checked, you know, a little few areas outside of my community and up where Councilmember Tillman lives. But it's, it's an issue. And generally, and this is just the first cut, it appears that it's a result of disrupting some of the open areas in the community that causes them to leave. Also, the cold is impacting it as well. So we will have, I'm working with the mosquito and vector district to come out and make a presentation, provide materials, and we'll have things online.
If I can just add one thing to that, I want to thank our city manager for putting together, because we had talked about it through email. Your recommendations were then shared by my HOA, who then sent it out to all of us. And because we, I'm not personally having an issue, but it is prevalent in my development. So thank you for doing that. That was very helpful.
Thank you. Okay. Now we are moving into item 10, which is the council reports on their activities. Mr. Juan.
It's been a while since we met. A lot of conversation with folks around town, again, as usual, busy with email. I did have an opportunity to present, or have a discussion with one of the local Cub Scout troops, PAC 262. I used the facilities at City Hall and talked to a bunch of little kids who don't, it's like they're, what my parents used to say about me, I was pointy and I could never sit still. So, so the kids do move around a lot. But it was, it was, it was great. I always appreciate doing that. And then just, you know, a bunch of, a lot of email and phone calls with folks.
Thank you. Councilmember Tillman.
Thank you, Mayor. On December 28th and 29th, I attended the services, memorial services for our dear friend, as I mentioned in closing for the last meeting, Allison McCauley. On the 4th, I attended the League of California Cities Policy Committees orientation. And we are also planning for our first meeting, which is coming up now on January 18th, which is Thursday, from 9:30 to 12:30. That is open to the public. If you go on the League of California Cities website, you can access it. And our Community Services Policy Committee will be meeting on that day, as will several other committees. On the 6th, I helped remove the decorations downtown with the CBCA. I was at the Bachi Courts. Right after that, I went and attended brunch at Skylar Bistro, which is right next to the Grove Park. That was the first day of Nikki having her brunch. And so she's now open for business. The food is delicious, if you have not gone down there yet. And it's nice to have somebody back in that space again. On the 7th, I had my Mount Diablo Education Foundation Student Engagement Committee meeting. That is a board that I sit on, that's here, part of our, it's not part of the district, but it does serve students that are in the Mount Diablo Unified School District. As you can see from our demonstrations here this evening, we are definitely involved in those schools. Our, those students will assist our board with fundraising efforts and offering suggestions on ways that we, as a board, can continue to partner with our schools in giving them access to funding for science, technology, engineering, art, and math in the district. So that's STEAM. Just some examples that we do, we do the garden that's up at the elementary school. That's part of growing healthy kids. We also send students at various schools throughout the district to outdoor ed, which is fifth grade science camp. We take care of art things. So there's a robotics club that's at Ignacio Valley High that we actually help fund, as well as Mount Diablo High School. So we're doing a lot of great things. On the 8th, I had back-to-back meetings for our Clayton Pride Board, as well as my Mount Diablo Education Foundation Board. On the 11th, I sat on a panel at the Ross Moore Democratic Club with Supervisor Ken Carlson, Councilmember Cesar Zapata from Richmond, Carrie Hillis from Maraga, and our moderator was Kevin Wolk from Walnut Creek. The topic was, should local government councils and boards consider geopolitical resolutions and the challenges that that would bring? We had quite a large crowd, and it was an interesting topic. So I'll share more of those, as I know that they're happening, but that one happened pretty quickly. From there, I ran to the mayor's conference. That was in Antioch. I happened to be nominated that night by Mayor Matt Rinn from Pleasant Hill to serve as the upcoming vice chair. I respectfully declined. And Alex Walker Griffin of Hercules will serve. It was me. Yes, that was me. And then stopped off right after that, out to Pittsburgh to support Chanel Scales Preston for her bid for District 5 supervisor. She had her kickoff event. And then on Saturday, I also attended a fundraiser for her. I had several meetings with our city manager. I addressed numerous questions from constituents and our neighbors about the mice, as the mayor mentioned. And it's not just us, it's Concord and Pittsburgh as well. They, they're everywhere. And then I had several questions regarding the survey results. So I'm glad that we're gonna be talking about that soon. Lastly, I had conversations with Laura Nakamura, who's a council member in the city of Concord. And she's interested in partnering with me on a project that we can work on jointly, right where our two cities meet. And upcoming events, Clayton Pride is having another meet and greet at Sky, is having a meet and greet at Skylar Bistro on the 24th, which is next week. That's gonna be a no-host happy hour. That begins at 4 o'clock for people to mix and mingle and find out about Clayton Pride. And then we'll move into our regular meeting at, before 6 o'clock. And dinner, dinner will be available to purchase. And I've heard her Thai food is amazing. So if you haven't gone, please go. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Clovin?
Skylar Bistro's Thai food is amazing. It's a welcome addition and a flavor to our town that we haven't had. And it's, it's perfect. It's a great date night. If you haven't had one, come locally and go enjoy. It's good to be back. I missed most of December, did a little bit of traveling. I have had some great conversations. I had a chance to walk our trails, Cardenay Trail specifically, several times, and met several residents at that very small, narrow portion of the path where the tree is holding up the path. And there's lots of questions about that. Fortunately, we do have a nice little fenced up to prevent people falling in. But we're gonna have a very wet winter, and we just gotta be cognizant of the safety and health and safety of our residents as we walk by that. Getting two people by, let alone a bike coming through, it's, it's a challenge. And we've got to be aware of the cost associated with fixing that at some point. Some great conversations in general was with, people were asking me about what's going on with the survey and our budget and everything else. I had a great conversation with our community development director regarding our zoning and actually understanding some of, some of our zoning designations and some of the new ones, especially ID, the institutional density, what that actually means and what our interactions with HCD are and how challenging they've been. And the person who's been assigned to work with us has got some, some certain things that they want to accomplish, which are unique to Clayton. So we're, we've got a lot of things to do to get that passed. And I just appreciate all of her efforts in, in helping Clayton get through those hurdles. And I have been working with Clayton Pride. It's coming up, June 2nd, it's not too far away. And it's, it's amazing how time is flying. And I just really appreciate that group and the joy that particular event brings to downtown. And with that, I'm closing my report.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Trupiano?
Thank you, Mayor. And Skylar Bistro's Thai food is amazing. We were there for her birthday party back in early December, the mayor and I, and some other folks. And it's incredible. So I wish Nikki all the best. I had a Clayton Community Library Foundation meeting on November, sorry, January 9th. And I will say, there has been some turnover in the staff. They are looking for a new president. And they are also looking for board members. Also, city manager and I have a meeting with the county at the end of this month to talk about a refresh for the library, which we hope is happening this year. And I also attended the mayor's conference in Antioch. They did a beautiful job that, Smith Landing is lovely. They did a really nice job there. I was also involved in the decor takedown with CBCA and lots of folks, including Debbie Bruno, who does a terrific job all the time. I want, I had a couple of meeting, Brett's back. So we had a very long meeting last week. I apologize again. I went on for quite a while, but we had a lot of catching up to do. I do want to say that Ken Carlson, our district supervisor, is having coffee at Endeavor Hall this Friday at 10:00 AM. And I plan on being there. And so bring your questions for the supervisor. But that's my report.
Thank you. Very briefly, I ended up the year with the County Connection Board meeting on the 21st of December. Then on the 3rd of January of 2024, we came back together as committee, operations and scheduling, and the buses are rolling, I can tell you that. Then on the 6th, we took down the decorations, like others here were part of that. And then we all went over to the new Skylar Bistro, which was, I guess they had a soft opening that day. And it was very well-attended. And I think she's gonna have a very successful operation over there. Then on the 8th of January, we had the first, second, excuse me, second Art and Wine Committee meeting. That's getting ready and coming together for the final weekend in April. And then on the 11th, also attended the mayor's conference in, where God created the best community, quote unquote. Anyway, I was trying to phrase that. Anyway, that's it. That wraps up my report and the council reports. And now at 9:03, we are going to adjourn and go into the closed session. And we want to thank everybody for their attendance here. And we're gonna be going into that session as with a conference with our labor negotiator, our Government Code Section 54957.8. And that's the agency designated representative, our city manager, with the executive assistant to the city manager and HR manager relative to, and the police chief's gonna join us, on the Police Officers or Peace Officers Association and their next step in their agreement. So with that.
Mayor, we're just confirming, there's no public comment on the closed session item?
Okay. We have any public comment on that? Nobody online, nobody cards? Okay, we have come out of closed session. And there are no reportable items. And we are going to adjourn this meeting in memory of Sergeant Shaw's father, who passed away unexpectedly last week. 10:16 PM. Okay.